Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, February 24th. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney, city planner, city engineer, along with all council members are present and our city administrator? At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to three minutes or less, since we have a very packed house.
Good evening, Jeanne Holland County Commissioner. Just want to say thanks for all of you that came to the open house last week and to the constituents that came. The highway department said they had over 100 people come. That was probably the best attended that they've ever had for an open house for a new roadway. They said most people wanted to know what the detour is going to be and when Costco was going to open. So we had a couple of people that were there for them, Fox Tailers, that were concerned about the Snowmobile Trail. But overall, it was very positive and it was really nice to have those of you that were there on hand. We really appreciate that. And then, second, I haven't been here, so thank you to the new council members and Jessica for like, like coming forward and being instituted now for the next four years. I look forward to working with you. And also, we have a new county administrator. Greg Kreiser is our administrator. He was, he's been our civil division chief for the county attorney's office. And so he sat next to our administrator for the last few years. The nice thing is, is now we don't have to poll anybody from the civil department, from the attorney office, because Greg is well-versed in law. And we were surprised that he took it on as interim and he found out that he liked it. And so we're very pleased. We didn't have to go through the onerous process of looking for an administrator. He, our administrators from our cities are very happy. Our business owners are very happy. He's a really a great fit. And so, very, very excited to go forward now. Makes a difference when you can pull the interim off of that, off of his title. And we're going to go forward and do great things. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Jeanne, so as you said, people from Fox Tailers and Atsigo River Riders were present. There were comments. We did get an email from the Fox Tailers and Chad has been CC'd on that.
Yes.
Adam, did, is a full, did everyone in the council get a copy of Chad's response? If not, can you send it to him? Because there were concerns, obviously with sidewalks, the ditches on both sides.
Yes.
And, you know, obviously, in both communities, we do support snowmobiling and we want them to be safe to do it.
So. Yes. So there's two things. The next day, I talked to Adam, Elverville Adam. And.
Atsigo Adam. Albertville Adam.
And, and, and I talked to Chad. So we did discuss that. And, and there is a potential of moving the, the, you know, on the south end, moving the trail to go around where the villa used to be. And then behind there, because that's wetland, and then it would go behind the cemetery and scoot back up, which would be ideal. The only thing is that there's 200 feet of fencing that Mindat owns that goes flush right up to the, to the parking lot of the villa, which is now a dance studio. So we are in, we are contemplating, seeing if that would, would be something that they would be interested in. And then going and talking to Mindat about moving that over just a little bit, that that fence line shows Mindat's easement. So if we would tell Mindat that it's just going to be that little 200 feet would just be moved over so that they could access that. That, and then I, I do know that the two Adams discussed, maybe, you know, maybe one of them would not plow, like Elverville would say, would plow ours. If that doesn't work, they could do that plan, like, let's not plow our sidewalk and then just do the other. The only problem is, is that both Adams know that whoever doesn't plow theirs, they would get the calls to say, why did you plow? So it's kind of like in the works. We have time, thankfully. As you know, the project isn't going to be done till August of 2026. So it's going to be a while that we can work it out. We are very much like in tune. St. Michael worked out too when they redid 35. They were working closely with the Fox Tailers to make sure that, you know, that, that, that was feasible for them. So we, it is something. It's just not. Chad said it's not feasible to buy more easement because it's $200,000 more and who's going to pay for it? I, it would be $200,000 probably on the Atsigo side that would be the most feasible. And the county and the city, I'm sure, don't want to incur that cost. And it's basically to accommodate the groomer. The, 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 a lot of the snowmobilers were fine with the path. It's just the Tom Burning had a problem with the groomer.
Yeah, how wide it is.
Right, right. So.
And, and there were, and obviously, it seemed like the chokehold also is the bridge, which.
Yes.
It's only as wide as it is. You need to get people safely over there, but that was a big concern too.
And, and the bridge is very unfortunate. I did go to the city of Atsigo that night of the open house. They had their meeting.
You mean Albertville?
Elverville's, yep. The mayor's very frustrated that we don't have, we're not getting a bridge or a widening bridge. But Chad has said repeatedly, unless the bridge is falling apart, Mindat will not do anything about it. Case in point, the one over in Monticello across the bridge, people were backed up all the way to 94 to get to Big Lake. They wouldn't do anything until it was structurally falling apart. So that's now why we're seeing them redoing that bridge, but it took a long time. So Chad doesn't see that happening for about 20 years because it's a nice bridge.
And Mindat owns all those bridges, right? Not the county, not the city.
Right, right. Now, what they could do is if Elverville wanted a trail, if they wanted to widen it and do a trail, they could do what Monticello has with a covered bridge over the interstate. But you know, that incurs a lot of costs. I don't know if they'll come and ask you guys if you want to connect or whatever, do something.
Had said that she's like, we should try to apply together.
Yeah, because there's trail grants. Yeah, yes. So, I mean, at this point, we just cross our fingers and hope Mindat plays with us.
My one caveat to that, though, is that the bridge they put in in St. Michael down by Pro River Gun Club, you can't have snowmobiles on. So it takes care of the pedestrian part of it, but it wasn't answering kind of the concern of the two snowmobile clubs that were looking for the winter side of things, so.
But, but right now, the snowmobile, like, they're really not allowed to put snowmobiles on that bridge right now. They do it because I, I asked some of the snowmobilers, because I'm not allowed to bike on that and, and walk on that. It says no pedestrians, no bikes. We do that every once in a while just to connect, because when my husband and I like to bike and you guys have all the trails and we want to get to Elverville. And they have said that, that it is really tricky and that they have had snowmobiles like roll onto the main road. So right now, it's not advantageous. I think it's going to be better that there, they actually have a dedicated spot for pedestrians and for snowmobiles. But now, I don't know, like, that's, that's going to be tricky because do you then keep snow on it? Like, or. Yeah.
I will go on record saying it seemed a little concerning to have pedestrians crossing that close and not the separation. But that would be bigger conversations, but I just wanted Adam to make sure. And if you're aware, I think you were on the email from the Fox Tailers, so, okay.
Yeah.
So. All right, any other questions?
Growing pains, but yeah. But, yeah, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Feel free to reach out to me anytime.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Renee Dean and I am representing the Rogers Youth Hockey Association. Many of our members are here tonight, so I'll be speaking on behalf. And, yeah, thank you guys for allowing us to speak. So I'm sure most of you know that the Rogers Youth Hockey Association is trying to build a second sheet of ice. Anybody, everybody aware of that? Yes, okay. So we are currently the largest hockey association in the state of Minnesota with only one sheet of ice. When I volunteered to help with our campaign efforts, I learned something that should matter to everyone here today. And that's that over 55% of the families registered with Rogers Youth Hockey are in fact from Atsigo. So more than half of the kids in our program, ones who will one day represent Atsigo in high school hockey are from our community. So that's why I'm here today, not just to ask for funding from you, but to ask you for a partnership, an investment, an investment in Atsigo's hockey families, an investment in our children's future, and an opportunity to build something lasting together. Something many of us have asked ourselves in our youth hockey association is why do we have to raise money for our rinks? Why aren't the cities providing this for us? After all, many hockey associations across the state are on their third or even fourth sheet of ice, mostly funded by their cities. But we understand the reality. Rogers and Atsigo are young, growing cities, and there are many priorities and funds are needed in many places. We aren't here to argue that the entire burden should fall on the cities, but it also shouldn't fall entirely on the families. We, as an association, are exhausting multiple efforts to raise money from our first gala that's going to be this spring, to selling memorial bricks for the new rink, to marketing, sponsorship, and then just asking for donations. It's been quite a challenge, full transparency, and we're still short a significant amount of funds. We're not asking for the world, but we are asking for help. And most importantly, we're asking for a partnership, I'll say it again, a regional partnership between the city of Atsigo and the city of Rogers. A partnership that with your help will create both a stronger program and give us the opportunity to build our much-needed sheet of ice for our youth hockey players. Across Minnesota, cities are working together to invest in regional sports facilities, and the results are overwhelmingly positive. Partnerships like these ensure equitable access, shared costs, and long-term sustainability. Few examples, right up the road, St. Michael-Alverville. The St. Michael-Alverville Arena is a joint effort between the cities of St. Michael, Alverville, and ISD 885. They in fact contribute equally financially to their S T M A program, even though the rink is only a one of the two cities. Some more examples are the All Seasons Arena in Mankato, Osseo Maple Grove, Chaska-Chanhasen, Becker Big Lake, the National Sports Center in Blaine, which is where we have spent a lot of our time, where seven of the eight rinks are financially supported by surrounding cities. This shows that when cities invest together, the benefits multiply because regional partnerships work. They provide fairness, stability, and a voice in decision-making. So let's talk about Atsigo. Like I said, 55% of our hockey players are from our city. This is not about funding another city's project. It's about securing Atsigo's place in a vital community resource. We know that Atsigo, much like Rogers, is a young and growing city. And there's exciting talk of a future where Atsigo might have its own high school, a vision that is necessary for the community's long-term success. When that day comes, wouldn't it be incredible to focus entirely on building a top-tier high school without the added burden of trying to construct a brand-new ice arena? The reality is costs are only going up. Waiting will make it harder, more expensive, and more complicated. The smartest investment is the one made before the need becomes urgent. So if we take action now, when Atsigo is ready for its own high school, we'll be already in a strong regional partnership with a home for both Atsigo and Rogers youth hockey players. And on that note, I'd like to wrap up by talking about our kids. From our mini-mites to our high school stars, the talent in our program is undeniable. We are watching something truly special unfold, a level of skill, dedication, and passion that could put Rogers Youth Hockey on the path to becoming legendary. But here's the reality, our program growth is outpacing our resources. Every year, more families join. Every year, more young skaters fall in love with the game. But without more local ice time, we're limiting their opportunities. Not because of talent or effort, but because we simply don't have the space. Our youth hockey association has a simple philosophy. Kids on the ice stay out of hot water. And that's not just a saying, it's backed by research. Sports keeps kids engaged. It builds discipline, teamwork, and resilience. Studies show that kids involved in athletics are more dedicated to academics and more likely to give back to their communities. When we invest in youth sports, we invest in the very values that define our community. We understand that some may see hockey families as just a small subset of the Atsigo community. But that does not make us any less important or any less deserving of support. In fact, you could make the same argument about any sport, facility, or service. Each one deserves and serves a portion of the community. Yet together, they shape the identity and wellbeing of our entire city. As city council members, you all are committed to serving our residents, ensuring that every child, every family, and every passion has a place to thrive. And this is no different. Atsigo's hockey families are part of this community and our needs matter. Supporting this investment isn't just about hockey. It's about upholding the principle that every group, child, and opportunity deserves consideration. And tonight, we ask that you stand with us just as you would for any part of this great city. Thank you for listening to my very long speech. Do you all have any questions for me or us, I should say?
So I did speak with Renee, the audience before. And I told her I was trying to do some digging, just trying to find out really what this looks like.
Yes.
And I could only find that it looks like the second sheet of ice is anywhere from like 15 to 17 million dollars.
Yes, the bids, I apologize, the bids that have come back have been higher than we anticipated. So we're looking at 15 million. We have funding from the city of Rogers and about 6.5 million. And we have a gap right now of about 5 million that we're trying to raise. And like I said, we are doing a lot of different things. We're becoming very creative and trying to raise our funds. But truthfully, just thought about with the city of Atsigo and realizing how many of our families are Atsigo, more about forming a partnership instead of just coming and asking you for money. It's more of a long-term solution and something that will positively impact both of our communities. And we'd love an opportunity to have a further meeting with, you know, the city of Atsigo, city of Rogers, and the Rogers city, or excuse me, the Rogers board.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, right.
Ms. Dean, how much, like ballpark would the association be contributing?
Would our association? Oh, you know, I'm not the treasurer, the secretary. I know that right now, I can tell you the funds that we've raised so far because I'm in charge of that. But we have to, to this date, in our account, just with funds raised, not like in our account based off other stuff. We've raised $170,000. And right now, we have, I'm estimating about 1.5 million, that's not signed, sealed, or excuse me, 1 million, that's not signed, sealed, and delivered yet with some of our naming rights.
So, so would this be like an arena or are we talking?
Yes. So when you're going down the 101, you've seen, or going up the 101, when you see the new, the new frame that's going up there?
Yeah.
That's the indoor turf. It's going to be, you know, phenomenal. It's going to serve lacrosse, football, baseball, soccer. Right in between there and our existing rink, what's currently the raft, is where we're wanting to build our second sheet of ice, so it would be connected to our existing sheet of ice.
And that, that facility is that I saw with the parking wreck of Rogers, right there?
Correct.
Is that totally them that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's run and maintained by the city of Rogers.
Well, they should have gave you guys like power for the ice arena. That's too bad.
I know. That's why we're, we are trying our best to get it. Only one sheet. And we are a very, very fast-paced, growing association. As you all know, Atsigo and Rogers are growing exponentially because of our location. And I, and I think everybody in this room that's part of the association can agree with Mayor Talent is, it's really exciting. And it's just so amazing for us.
It does draw a community together and it's great for kids.
Yes.
I would ask Adam, what would the best thing to do be, maybe have her reach out to the city?
Mayor, I think Ms. Renee clarified, the, the best course of action would be to have further discussions with all of the partners that would be on this project and learn more about what the actual ask or contribution might be. But again, being a member at the table, those conversations would be step one.
Yeah, I, I had said that out in the audience too, that I think there's a lot of information that, like, I couldn't find it. I was poking around on Rogers and just, I couldn't find where your funding source was, where, how much you're short, what are we looking at? I mean, obviously, it's, you could say we're 7 million short or something.
Right.
But what does that look like? And is that to capital? Is it for longevity of it? I mean, there's a lot of pieces to it and it's in another community. And I'm not denying that there's hockey families, because I told you, my son played hockey back in the day.
Right.
So before we even had an arena in Rogers, our kids went everywhere else.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
This is, has, this has been going on for a long time. He's going to be 28.
Yeah. Well, no, you're exactly right, Jessica. That's the thing is we, and, and something that we, why I really wanted to talk to you guys about today is like, yes, it's in Rogers, but I've, I've personally been reaching out to a lot of different hockey associations to see how that looks. Because yes, we want it to be, you know, a fair and equitable thing and makes sense for all cities involved. And to speak to your point of why it's so hard to find one there, it's because truthfully, there's a group of parents that are like trying to put together and, and do the fundraising and, and it's, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You're all volunteers.
Right, exactly. So yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I look at it like, I think it's fair to say that we should get the stakeholders at Rogers Youth Hockey. We ask for both cities to sit down what that looks like. Because to, to give you a commitment.
Oh.
It's just not feasible at this moment and there's a lot of pieces to it. And also intricacies of it not being in our community too. So, right, I think that we would have a lot of questions.
Absolutely, rightfully so. And by no means expecting any type of answer today. We just really wanted to engage you all and understand what we're trying to do, what it's about and not, because obviously, through here, we don't want you thinking, just coming to you, asking for a one-time donation and money. It's so much more than that. We really have a vision of what this could be as far as a partnership, a regional partnership.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor. I would, I would caution you, though, I mean, the city, as a city council, we have to prioritize, you know, things, public safety and.
Absolutely.
Other things, so know that.
Yes. Understood.
Thank you.
Ryan?
I was just going to mention, I recently attended a community partners meeting for ISD 728. And I raised the issue of, as they're considering building that high school, if there were an option for local sports teams to, or organizations to get involved and perhaps sponsor, and you know, provide some donations for some various sports fields there. I'm not sure if that's helpful to you, because it might be a while. I was politely reminded that there are currently no plans for a high school in Atsigo because those plans haven't been developed yet. But that may be something worth looking into as well, seeing if, what the plans are for ISD 728, if they would be open to being at the table.
Right. No, thank you for that.
I, I would, I guess that was going to be my question is that it's owned by Rogers, but yet the high school hockey team uses that. So how, I mean, there's got to be an exchange of funds then that the school is stepping, it's, it's.
Between the high school?
Yes, it's in a parking lot.
Right, I bet, that's outside my, yes. But yeah, our Rogers Youth Hockey Association includes everything up into, up into high school, yes. But I don't know the, the relationship with the high school teams.
I think it would be fair to include them at the table too.
Absolutely.
They're taking, I mean, obviously, we want our high school kids to have their hockey games, but it does take time away from you guys, which then limits your ice time, sending you to the super rink, for example. So, you know, but I'd like to see what, what their ultimate plans are when you put another high school. I mean, you talk about partnerships for the, anything up to high school, but then what does that look like?
Right.
Are we going to need to be building an ice arena here in the city of Atsigo next to the high school one day too? And so, you know, we have to look at that whole picture, so.
Yeah, ideally, I think it would be amazing to have the city, if, like, let's say the city of Atsigo, we have our own high school, but there's again, that home base still, like Rogers and Atsigo are already a regional partnership. So that's not even on Atsigo's to-do list at that point, you know, like, like other regional partnerships.
Well, I'm going to direct this to staff to start that conversation. You get to call Rogers. They came here.
I, I believe our parking wreck director has your contact, so I'll be reaching out and look forward to meeting.
Perfect.
Okay. And thank you all for attending this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Renee, for coming up. I'm sure it wasn't easy to do, but thank you for the presentation and thanks for the ask. Thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can lower the podium. There's a. Does she want to speak it? Because we won't be able to hear if she doesn't speak anything.
Come out.
Or see her.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it goes low enough so we can see her. Oh, yeah.
Go down pretty well. First thing.
Do you want to pull the microphone down to you?
Hi, my name is Morella Morgan. I play for the U A Gophers. I want a second sheet, so I do not have to practice at other rinks anywhere else. I want to become a pro player and have a new rink. Will help me and all of my teammates do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you. I hope one day you do become a pro hockey player. We'll have to, hopefully, somebody in the audience reported. All right, we are set open forum. Any other comments? All right, we will close open forum and move to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? And just for audience members, you're welcome to say, but if you also want to leave, you're welcome to do that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll just pause for a second, let them get out just for the noise. All right. Item two, consider agenda for approval.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring down item 3.4. We can make that 4.2.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Corey?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as.
On consent agenda.
Oh, right, consent agenda as modified.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Corey, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item 4.1 is a presentation of the Wright County Sheriff's Office annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lieutenant Jeff McMcKens, and I'm the district lieutenant for the Atsigo area. And hopefully, y'all got some time to enjoy the nice weather today before we get back to winter, probably. And, uh, hopefully y'all got some time to enjoy the nice weather today before we get back to winter probably. I'm gonna go through our annual report for twenty twenty-four. Pretty informal, so if at any point anybody has any questions, just shout them out to me or throw a pencil at me or something to get my attention here. First couple pages, this is just our, our mission statement and our guiding principles for the sheriff's office. And then the next page here is just a little letter from our sheriff, Sean Derringer, um, giving some little background information about our sheriff's office. And the next page here goes over kind of the, the contract history and, and rates with our sheriff's office, so. In January of twenty twenty-three was the last time we made any sort of changes to our contract. And we've been providing fifty hours of coverage per day since then. There's about eighteen thousand two hundred hours a year. And, uh, that comes, and with the twenty twenty-five cost of just a touch over two million dollars. Five dollar an hour rate increase translates to about four and a half percent or so for this year. This next slide here is just a general overview of some quality of life type calls for service. Overall, kind of the theme here, some, some areas grew a little bit, some shrank a little bit. Overall, stayed pretty, pretty consistent. Uh, there's no, no huge swings one way or another here. Alarms were up about fifteen percent. We're seeing more alarms at businesses. Somewhat of note, uh, given the population increase recently is you're about the only community to experience a reduction in medical calls. It was small, only twenty-one less than, than, uh, twenty twenty-three, but, uh, those are something that other, other communities are seeing like a ten percent growth in, so, and coupled with your population growth. We, we would have expected to see more, not less. Overall, we responded to just shy of nine thousand calls for service, uh, last year in the, in the city. That is a very slight reduction from, uh, twenty twenty-three. It's about three percent less. That didn't quite translate to the number of reports we, we wrote, uh, where we're pretty much even for twenty twenty-three. Atsigo traffic-related calls, um, this is again, one that, uh, uh, some numbers kind of changed categories, but overall, uh, we stayed pretty consistent. Of note worthy, we had about an increase of about fifty percent in our DWIs, something we've noticed, uh, just sheriff's office wide, where we have been and remain in one of the top ten deadliest counties, uh, for traffic fatalities. I believe we had thirteen or fifteen last year, and almost all of those included some, some sort of impairment. So that's something that, uh, as an agency, we've just really focused on and, uh, countywide, we had four hundred and seventy-one DUI arrests last year, which as near as I can tell puts us number five in the state, uh, for an agency with the fifth most DUI arrests. So that's something we
Just one question, did you, just quickly, did you say it was a fifty percent increase in DW, or DUIs, is how you put it, listed in Atsigo?
Correct, yep. So in twenty twenty-three, I believe it was either thirty-five or thirty-six DUI arrests we had, and then twenty twenty-four, we had fifty-three.
And is there like, um, hotspots where that's occurring?
Not, nothing that, no, they're, they've been pretty much all over.
Okay.
You know, we see more on major roadways and stuff, but nothing that's clustered around one particular area.
Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to
Yeah, thanks, yeah, just keep the questions coming. Crime instances, um, again, total number of crime instances from twenty-three to twenty-four didn't really change that much, just kind of the areas that they, uh, happened and changed slightly. Fraud grew a lot, um, but that's not unique to Atsigo. We've seen that just across the board in the county, statewide, nationally. There's been a lot of, uh, cryptocurrency scams going around, um, that's a new thing and takes a lot of investigative resources to try to uh, track where all of that is going. Our state did pass some laws, uh, last year that helped first-time victims of cryptocurrency scams. So that has been helpful, uh, in recouping some of that money for those victims. Otherwise, uh, the other noteworthy thing on this, uh, graph here is burglaries. So you're at four for this year. Twenty twenty-three, you're at, I believe, twenty-seven. So that's a huge reduction. Twenty twenty-three was a little bit uni- unique, um. We had a couple of juveniles that were going around breaking into and vandalizing construction houses. So twenty twenty-three was an outlier. Um, we did, uh, catch those juveniles and they were charged. And now we're back to much more reasonable numbers, but that is a big change from twenty twenty-three. Next graph just shows a, kind of a comparison of your population growth and calls for service. You'll see, uh, population has climbed pretty steadily, but, uh, calls for service surprisingly have not, uh, kind of matched that population growth. We kind of remain relatively steady there, so that's been a nice trend to see. This, uh, lower section here, it is, uh, basically just a typed out version of that, uh, graph that compares twenty-three to twenty-four. So you can see, uh, burglary, twenty twenty-three was twenty-seven, now we're back to four for twenty twenty-four, so, um, there was total at bottom, slight growth and, uh, total for twenty twenty-four, but, uh, just the increase in that fraud makes up for, for that growth. There is a lot of stuff that, that stayed similar and a lot of stuff that, that reduced fraud and the sex-related crimes are the only two that are, that kind of grew from noteworthy. There's, I did look into that, see if there was some sort of rend or something and it just seems like a bad year. There's not, there's not anything really related amongst them or some trends to identify there.
Can you say if it's happening in our neighboring cities at all? The same type of increase?
The end, this is a bigger increase than maybe some other cities have seen, but we have seen increases in a lot of the cities.
Good.
Yep.
Looks like we dropped substantially in our drug-related charges.
Yeah.
Yeah, so twenty twenty-four is the first year, first full year that marijuana has not been a crime. And so we've seen a lot of drug-related stuff drop all over them, because we're not seeing marijuana-related charges.
Okay, I was wondering that.
Yep. Our special investigation unit, they, uh, focus primarily on narcotics, but, uh, they are plainclothes deputies and they will kind of help out anywhere where plainclothes, uh, police officers are needed, so, um, it's kind of a breakdown of, of things that they did within the city. Overall, it's the, again, one of the, we had this, they had the same number of calls in your city as they did in twenty twenty-three. Just the areas kind of got moved around, but that's just, um, as, as we need them, so. Our major crimes investigation unit, that is a fancy name for our crime scene unit. And they did see a reduction of calls in Atsigo in twenty twenty-four, and that's primarily because they did not respond to nearly as many burglaries. So, um, they played an integral role in twenty twenty-three and kind of helping, um, solidify those cases, uh, against those juveniles and, and gather evidence and stuff, so. You'll see, uh, deaths are, uh, death and crashes are kind of the, the two biggest response categories for them. Um, that is pretty consistent amongst all communities. They'll respond to any sort of unexpected or unwitnessed death and just kind of help document things and try to answer any questions we can for the families. And our criminals, criminal investigations division or detectives, kind of a breakdown of their workload. This graph or this chart here is pretty consistent with our twenty twenty-three. There is an overall reduction in the number of cases they handled, um, uh, but, uh, kind of the types of cases here are all pretty consistent. Um, and theft by and large remains, uh, the, the top one. Again, nothing that's unique to Atsigo, but, uh, retail theft has, has definitely been on the rise for several years. Our school resource officers, so, uh, Atsigo has one, uh, SRO that's in our Prairie View schools. They saw a very slight increase in the number of calls they handled, uh, an additional two in twenty twenty-four, but again, the breakdown, uh, is pretty consistent year over year and from school to school. Pretty consistent with what they're seeing. And this last page just gives a comparison to a couple of other neighboring cities, uh, Atsigo's, or, excuse me, uh, Atsigo, Monticello and St. Michael. By population, Monticello is probably the smallest there, but, uh, they have the, the bigger numbers. Um, just, uh, being right on the interstate and, uh, much larger, uh, kind of commercial, industrial type area there contributes to that. Um, otherwise, there's not much that stands out particularly noteworthy to me on here. But, uh, if there's anything, any questions, I can be happy to answer them.
I have one question.
Sure.
Uh, regarding school resource officers, so I know that obviously, well, all kids in Atsigo go to, I shouldn't say all, majority of the kids go to Rogers, which is Hennepin County. Does, if an incident with that SRO officer, which would be the city of Rogers, does that get transferred to the city of Atsigo so you're aware of it? Or how would, what's the conversations that the two different uh, departments have? Are you involved in any of that, since those are Atsigo kids?
Yeah, so, um, Deputy Haggerty is the SRO that's at the schools in Atsigo here. I know he does have a relationship with the, excuse me, the Rogers SRO. Um, and they do communicate, uh, regarding some of those kids. Um, I don't, I guess I'm hesitant to say exactly how frequent or often that is, but, uh, I do know they have a relationship and at least when they feel necessary, they, they freely share information.
I mean, I just, cause when you look at some of the things about loss of property, so it's obviously potentially could be happening at Rogers, but some of the items might end up here at their home in Atsigo, so I, I didn't know what, or I just had a question on that, so.
Absolutely, good question. I don't actually, I don't actually know the answer to that question. I'm gonna guess that the answer is no, but, uh, I can look into that and get back to you, but, uh, we, uh,
I, we didn't, we didn't hear the answer or the question, so could you repeat it?
He asked if Atsigo was number one for fireworks complaints.
You get back to us on that.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I
It was said at a council meeting is what it was, so.
Generally, um, so I'm just trying to think back around the Fourth of July and I, I remembered thinking to myself that we have had, we haven't had nearly the number of fireworks complaints countywide that we have had in previous years. So I don't necessarily know that that was due to a reduction in the number of fireworks being launched, because there was still a lot of those.
It did rain on the Fourth of July this year, so that made it reduce.
Yeah, for sure.
It rained all day. Could be.
Okay, does anyone else?
All right, just have one last page here. Um, this just breaks down, uh, calls by time of day. Nothing super noteworthy here. Um, real early morning is, is, uh, you know, two, three, four o'clock in the morning is our slowest time, kind of peak in the evening hours. That's, uh, pretty universally, uh, uh, the, the norm of what we see. And then calls by day of week, this does vary by, from community to community, and I have no idea why. Um, you are more consistent than probably any other city. With just that, that there's not a, like a
An outlier.
Yeah, an outlier of a day, a day. Um, all those bars are at about the same height, so. And the last page is just contact information for, uh, all of the staff at the sheriff's office.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just really appreciate it. Welcome to Atsigo. This was, uh, your first time in front of us, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah, and thanks for having me. Always good opportunity to talk about the work we do in your city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four point two, was item three point four. Right?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to bring this down so a separate vote could occur. I oppose this action because our city is able to receive excellent service from our existing contract providers at a price point that is cost efficient for the taxpayer.
There a motion on?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Right, Tina?
Motion to approve pay application number two in the amount of forty-nine twenty for work completed on the fire and emergency services facility project.
I'll second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
That's great.
I'll say that, you know, everybody has their own opinion and they're, they're welcome to it. I appreciate council member Dunlops, so. Want to view on this, but, um, I do have a hard time with, once we've, you know, got something passed in each and other week, going back at it and calling these out, which that's his prerogative, but it's unproductive to me. We have a lot other, uh, responsibilities and, uh, considerations that, that our constituents also care about, so. That's why I'm voting for to approve this and want to comment. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, I would just say, I guess I, I would be willing to stick with these types of commitments and then part of the, as part of this motion and the project. But that's not the motion that's before me. Um, if this is approved, and I'm sure it will be, the total spend will be one point nine million dollars to have a one-person fire department with no station and no trucks yet. Um, we can stop the bleeding anytime we want. I think that's what we should do, so I'm going to exercise my right to vote no.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes fourth one. Moving on to administration, five point one is a cold storage facility. Adam?
Mayor, council, thank you. Uh, in front of you tonight is an RCA, uh, to authorize a public bidding process on the cold storage project, so. Uh, we do have Jake, uh, Wolfensec from Wolf here this evening, so I'm gonna pull up a presentation from him. Uh, very similar to the materials that are in your packet, uh, so, uh, everything that you'll see on the screen is already in your packet, but with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jake and then, uh, we can go from there.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, Jake Wolfensec, for those who have not met me, I'm a project manager architect at Wolf Architects and Engineers. Um, over the last couple of months, we've been, uh, working on the bid package and construction documents for the Public Works, uh, cold storage facility. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, so the first image here is just the overall campus plan and you can see in the orange up on the top of the plan, uh, where the planned cold storage would, um, would be going on the site, uh, just kind of north of the salt shed. Um, I do have a schedule on here as well. I can just run through that. I think today, uh, Adam mentioned we're asking for council approval to go out for bid. Um, Carl Sanderson would be, uh, publishing the bidding documents and looking to get bids from interested contractors at the end of, uh, uh, March, looking at March eighteenth potentially for a bid opening, um, and then looking to
And then looking to get approval and recommendations to the city for final approval of contracts, March twenty-fourth. And I think that schedule's still in play, but could change depending on a few factors. So with that, I'll go to the next plan. The site plan here just shows the building a little closer up. You can see some of the pavement. There's really limited pavement throughout the site. I think it's mainly gravel in and around the building. And then on the right side, there is an overhang, which you'll see in some pictures in a moment for protecting material and equipment that the Public Works Department has. We are doing or proposing to do that slab as an alternate, just to see what the pricing is. And if we can afford it, it would be, I think, a valuable asset to the facility to have that section paved underneath the overhang. But all in all, a pretty simple building. Another maybe site component, I'll note this building is pushed up onto the west side. There's an existing fence line that we would be removing a section of to have the building act as a fence line on that west side. And then just reconnecting where the the two ends of the severed fence would be. Go to the next one. Thank you. This isn't the floor plan. Again, it's a pretty straightforward design. It's post-frame wood construction, so there is no insulation. It would be wood posts that go down below the frost line, and we would put a concrete pucker foundation for those to sit on underneath the ground. There's three doors, two overhead doors, and a concrete slab that drains out to those overhead doors for the interior. A few of the elevations here for your for your reference, there's, I mentioned the two overhead doors, a couple of the the three man doors, and then there you can see that overhang in the middle picture on the left. And I think the next one, Adam, should show some of the materials. So it would be a metal clad building. We would propose materials that are similar to the aesthetic of Public Works and City Hall. And so some of those options are called out here for your reference. So looking at kind of a base color and then a lighter material on top and then a dark bronze roof. I think that's it, so I can open it up for any questions or clarifications, but appreciate your your time and consideration.
I have a question, Jake. What is, I guess, what's the longevity of this, of these materials? Like, what are the warranties on them for color fade?
The warranty on the, in the building, it is a, it's a post-frame wood construction, so obviously it's not going to stand up to a F-three tornado. But I think the materials themselves have a, the metal materials are going to have a twenty-five to thirty-year warranty for color fade. But I mean, beyond that, I'd say the more you protect it and keep good care of it, the longer it'll last, like anything else. But I would think, yeah, thirty to forty year would, if you take care of it, would be a good life cycle for this type of building.
Madam Mayor?
That's great.
My my question might be more for staff. Do we know what the security of of the building would have? Would it be within a fence? Or and who would have access to that? And what kind of, I guess, equipment are we storing in there?
That is a fence.
Mayor, to clarify the question, there is currently and would continue to be gated access into this part of the the property. And as Jake mentioned, there's fencing along the west side that would tie into the building. And so the entire area would be secure. And then as far as the doors go, there would be similar controls that we have at the current City Hall, this building and the Public Works facility with fob access. And then working with IT about whether or not there would be any security cameras that would go along this project as well.
What kind of vehicles, their equipment, would it be parked parked?
Could you come to the podium?
Nothing with a gross vehicle weight over ten thousand. Am I correct?
Part of the discussion points that we had here a number of weeks ago was if we were to store any commercial vehicles in there, we would have to go with the fire suppression system, which was going to drastically drive the costs of the building up. And so in discussion with with Wolf and K, we would just go about it as an administrative control that nothing that was a commercial vehicle would be stored in there. So it would be your your lawn board, your your pickup trucks. Everything smaller than one ton, really.
Would this be sufficient, you think, for for you for the next decade? Is it?
Decade? Well, twenty years, thirty years, something.
Jake, what I, yeah. No, we've been, we've been talking about this for for quite some time. It's definitely going to help us. I think it buys us, buys us some time.
So it's going to be some, you know, equipment that's going to have electrical components and stuff like that. How are we managing the, you know, are we putting in some controls at the bottom where because it's, because of the type of structure, you don't actually have like a concrete ridge that prevents rodents from getting in. You have wood, and we all know what happens over time with wood and rodents and stuff like that.
And water.
And what?
And water.
And water, yeah. Well, they'll use treated wood, which, you know, is pretty decent for a number of years. But but in this scenario, have you considered any any type of, you know, curb even on the inside? It helps, you know, reduce the the transfer or even on the outside.
So I think at one point, we're designing this as a pre-engineered metal building, and we did have the curb coming up. It's almost a stem wall that came up a couple of feet off the ground.
But drives that different price point for that.
Yeah, and so now we're kind of back to what you're talking about. I can check to see. I think there's most likely a detail to combat some of the issues you're bringing up. I will say the grading around the building is sufficient, so we're not going to have water pooling or pounding up against the building. But if there's a a different way we can think about that detail, just to protect the base, I don't think it's a bad point.
Yeah, it's, if you did it on the outside or you even on the inside, just it's another kind of roadblock for them.
Right.
For getting in. I've worked on these in the past. And then, did you guys actually spec all wood materials and that type of thing? Or did you, is it a?
Delegated, the, it'll be delegated, so we
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we've identified the parameters and have a specification.
Okay.
Pin them down to what they need to do.
Kevin, what would, what would you guys do with this in the summertime? Would would some of the parking wreck or park guys work out there too? Or because they're kind of in?
Wouldn't consider it.
Yeah, it's not.
Just.
Storage.
Hockey are in.
I didn't mention that there is lighting on the interior and then on the exterior as well as pretty minimal on the mechanical side, but there is ductwork with air intake and exhaust, just to keep it a good workspace if people do happen to be in there.
Good deal. Can you come to the podium? Kevin, you're the worst audience member.
To your point on the testing control, we currently have a contract ongoing with Adams Pest Control, so they're at City Hall on a monthly basis, and we can just add that to their list of services.
For sure, yeah, definitely do that regardless, but the curves does does help slow them down a little bit.
Yeah, I think we can look into it and I I will, we can get back to you, but I think it's a good idea, so.
The Public Works, maybe check this out and it's, if you guys have any thoughts on it or comments or think it's a good thing.
Madam Mayor, I would just say that I I think I I won't take any credit. Staff worked really hard to find something that was within budget, that was, you know, not ideal, but it's something that's going to buy us some time, like you said. And I know that that was not a fun process, so I want to thank everybody for for doing that. Yeah, I'm in full support. I think this is something that we can, we can use. We do need it, and it will help us buy some time while we figure out what the next steps are.
All right, any other comments? Otherwise, we have action that we need to take this evening. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, motion to approve the plans and specifications and order advertisement for bids for the Atsigo Cold Storage Facility project.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Ryan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is item five point two, advisory commission appointments. Adam?
Mayor, Council, thank you. In your packet is a short RCA kind of outlining the process is to what the council conducted for advisory commissioners. You met and interviewed numerous applicants on February thirteenth. Staff was directed to prepare a resolution, which is in your packet. There's also kind of an appointment schedule, assuming that the council did approve those, what the next four years of appointments looks like for each of the four commissions. So again, there's a resolution in the packet for the council to consider.
All right. Also, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to oppose a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, appointing commissioners to advisory commissions. Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
I move to amend the motion, striking a line that reads Alan Offerman.
Michelle. Oh. Michelle or Tina is requesting.
I'd like to motion to amend the resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash ten, appointing commissioners to advisory commissions without Alan Offerman for the term.
So you're agreeing, okay. Are you agreeing?
Yes, second.
To remove Alan from?
Oh, no, 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 that's right.
I'm sorry.
So we can talk about that separately and vote on that separately. Is that what we're trying to do?
No, his request.
Oh, I see.
Mayor, Council. We have a a motion and a second to approve the resolution as written, and there is a comment to amend that, and so it would be up to the two individuals if they wish to amend that, Dave, is that a fair? Summary.
Yeah, the original moving party could, I guess, accept the amendment. Or if not, then there would need to have to be a second to the motion to amend it.
So, okay. Oh. Misunderstood. Okay, we have the motion, a second, a request for change. Seconds, Ryan's request, and they don't agree to it.
Mayor, so the first motion's on the table.
Yes. All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes fourth one. Okay. All right. All right, City Council reports and updates, Heritage Preservation Commission, Corey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not meet this month, but we'll be meeting in March.
Parks and Rec, Michelle.
Parks and Rec did not have a meeting this month. It was canceled. Absolutely, meeting next month. There was a couple events that did occur in February. Attended one of them, that was for the winter festival. There's another one.
The thing winter festivals are now would be Bobby Festival. Exactly. Okay, Planning Commission, Ryan?
Madam Mayor, there was no Planning Commission. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March third. Mayor, there will be no meeting on March third. The next most likely meeting day that the Planning Commission would be the first meeting in April at this point.
You're wiping out March altogether, huh?
Nothing happening unless something walks in the door at this point, so.
Thank you. Public Safety Commission, Tina.
Let's see. God, this seems like so long ago. Let's see, Brian from Alina was at our meeting. He mentioned that the response times are seventeen percent down, so that's a good thing. We're getting to responding in a good time, so that is good. We are going to meet eventually with Dr. Nick Maleska. He is the the medical director for St. Cloud Monticello area. So I think, I don't know if it was our next meeting or what we were going to, but we, eventually we're going to meet him as the medical director of Alina. Or I should say, sorry, St. Cloud and Monticello, so looking forward to that. That's really about it. That's really about it. Besides, Daryl Woods, I don't know, May twenty-fifth, the two trucks are coming in, unless that's changed, but that's about it.
Thank you. All right, we are still in the City Council reports and updates. Does anyone else have anything?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, correct.
I was just going to mention that I attended the Elk River Chamber newly elected official and business expo. Probably ten fifteen people at Boondocks. A lot of them were from the EVAs of Elk River and Sherburne County. So good friendly meeting, nothing too outrageous, but solid.
Three of us this last weekend attended the Minnesota legal, or Minnesota legal. Legal Minnesota, I'm getting twisted, event in Plymouth. We did talk about it at our workshop, but that was a good workshop for all of us to go to. We thought a lot about how to work together as a team, good, just a good opportunity for us to network. Well-attended in our session, which was the advanced, and I believe, I didn't write down the number to you, but it was, it was a fairly good turnout for the newly elected, which I know, Michelle, you attended a few weeks prior to that, so. You know, some years we get together on that second day, and it's the whole group, but they did not do that this year, so they kept us separate.
It'd be nice if, and maybe, I thought they did this one year where you kind of get together with your neighbors, like Dayton or sort of thing.
They haven't done that for a while.
I mean, that was really good, though.
Yeah, and then, as Jeannie said, a lot of us did attend the open house, which, as stated earlier, as we talked in the beginning, it was well-attended. There are some concerns that I think we heard from people that were present, concerns about the roundabouts and but it really seemed a lot centered around getting people safely from Atsigo over to Albertville, so that pedestrian crosswalk area. So that that was a concern, and obviously we're up against a bridge that they say is good enough for now, but that's a little concerning for us, so. But more to follow, and Adam, did you send, did you get a chance to forward the email from Eagle Stoll Book Club to us, the council?
I will post council meeting, yes.
Thank you. Well, you're over there with your mouse, so figured. Thank you. So just, I mean, obviously, I think there's just going to be a bigger conversation, it sounds like with with a city or county engineer and including the city engineers and councils on what this looks like, so. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
At the last council meeting, my ethics were questioned, and an attempt was made to impugn my character through certain statements. It was claimed that council members should not submit time cards for council photo sessions when those photo sessions occur in the same night as a regular council meeting. when those photo sessions occur in the same night as a regular council meeting. I ask unanimous consent to enter into the record time cards from February twenty twenty-three, showing that all council members submitted time cards for a photo session that occurred on the same night as a regular meeting, including the council member who made the accusation against me. I asked unanimous consent. I didn't hear any objection.
Mayor, I don't know if unanimous consent would be required. If, I understand Councilmember Dunlap has some documents, which I think are currently public record. He wants to, you know, have Audra take possession of copies of those documents. I don't think there's a problem with that. I don't think it has to be attached to the minutes for the meeting or, I mean, there's no formal record of this meeting other than minutes and the recording. So I don't know if there's a process to formally by vote enter something into the record. So I guess it's just a question of.
But you're asking for this February of twenty twenty-three, Ryan?
Correct.
So I guess my one comment or question, and I, I called Adam about this too. Can we all agree that we never called for a special meeting for those photos? Adam sent an email to all of us to say, here's when the photos are. If I look back at the time cards from February of twenty twenty-three, Audra sent out, I mean, it says on the top line that it says special media on it, and you write council photos. So so are you questioning if we all got paid in February of twenty twenty-three, Ryan?
I'm not questioning, and it's part of the record. And I think it's, it's more than a little curious, but the last time the council all got together for photos, every council member put it on their time card. But this time, I'm the only one that did. So it's as if a conversation occurred without me.
Yeah. I can tell you this much. I turned in my time card first. Audra, can you verify that? You did. I turned in my time card first. You sent me a message the next week that said, are you including photos? And I said, no. So I don't know what anyone else did. She asked me. I turned in my time card. I can't speak for anyone else, but I will answer what you were asking. And I typically am the first one to do my time card. Mine is always different, so.
And I've never filled out a time card before, so I don't know what I was doing.
Mayor, Council, to clarify, twenty twenty-three, it was scheduled as a special meeting. This time it was not just given a time. It was done at the very, prior to the very first City Council meeting. The council had not met since December. So we did not call it as a special meeting, but did post a notice of quorum on the city website.
So it was a quorum of the council, but not a special meeting?
No, because he sent us an email saying, did we make that night work? But we wouldn't have had a city council meeting yet.
Correct. The, the photo session in twenty twenty-five was not a called special meeting of the city council. There was no call to order. There was no motions to adjourn. It was posted as a notice of quorum.
Well, Madam Mayor, it was also stated at the last council meeting that council members are not allowed to enter onto their time cards attendance for meetings when they are not the appointed liaison or alternate. And that this practice of doing so has been a recent occurrence, and that only I do it. I ask unanimous consent to enter into the record selected time cards from September twenty fifteen through December twenty twenty-four, showing one hundred thirty-two instances of council members other than me submitting time cards for attending commission meetings for which they were not the appointed liaison or alternate, or they were the alternate, but the liaison was present. This includes the very first time card ever submitted, which shows that a council member attended a commission meeting to which they were not the liaison or, or alternate, and reflects a decade of precedence.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
In my statement, I never, ever said this is all directed at you. I was asking for clarification because I noticed that it has changed in the last four years since I have been on council. You chose to make it about you.
Madam Mayor? Of the one hundred thirty-two instances, fifty-five of them were approved by the member who made the accusation against me when he was previously on council. And that includes two instances of attendance at a meeting for which he was not the acting liaison. Accusations were made against me without any proof being provided. My due process rights were not protected, and I was given no opportunity to prepare a defense. These time cards exonerate me against the basis accusations levied upon my character and should serve as a reminder to my colleagues to not make claims about the ethics of fellow council members without having done the research and presenting the evidence.
Madam Mayor? What caught my attention in getting up to speed was there were seventeen or nineteen instances where you attended public safety commissions and got paid for it. That was not the way it worked for the existence of Atsigo. So it caught my attention, so that's why I was asking for clarification.
Madam Mayor, I appreciated the question personally, because I'm still figuring things out.
Madam Mayor, the, the comment that was just made by the member previous is contradicted by the record. There were many instances where council members attended meetings where they were not the liaison or the alternate, and it was included on their time card. It is not a recent occurrence. It occurred on the very first time card.
Madam Mayor, I will say again that I was asking for clarification and people's thoughts on this. I wasn't accusatory. I was bringing it to the council's attention.
And my comment would be that if council members in the past have had questions, we always accept the time card. So I would tend to agree with, I mean, these were presented if people had questions, which I've talked to you before. And I would, if anybody did it, if I had questions, I would ask them directly. So we've approved your time cards, and so for Cory to ask the question, I don't, I guess I'm not sure exactly where it was going, but I'm not questioning that you should have been paid for, Ryan, if that's, if you're thinking I have anything to do with it.
Madam Mayor, that was not my intention. My intention was going forth, what should we be voting? You can't change the past, but understand where we're at, because there was a difference from what I observed in how we used to do it. That's all.
Madam Mayor, and I think moving forward, we need to, again, as we stated the last time, come together and figure things out because there's, there's too many, there's too many different things going on. There's someone saying this, someone's saying this, and we just need something that is going to be rectified and moving forward. This is what we get paid for.
It is an agenda, I don't know.
Mayor, as requested at the last meeting, it is added to the agenda for this Wednesday.
All right, any other city council reports and updates? Moving on to staff reports and updates. Adam?
Mayor, Council, no additional updates from me tonight.
Audra?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates.
Dave?
No updates, thank you, Mayor.
Dan?
Mayor, no update.
You already told us that.
I know.
Rock?
No updates, Mayor.
Daryl? Okay. All right, Kevin? All right. No other updates. A motion to adjourn would be in order, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Cory. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending.